Good evening, everybody. I will call this study session to order. This study session is an update from MINDOT. Thank you, MINDOT, for coming and giving us an update on the 494 project. I will pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome Andrew Latia and Amber Blanchard back to provide an update on the 494 project and also April Crockett's in our audience here tonight. Tonight's presentation is informational, and it's a chance for you all to ask questions. One thing I think it would be helpful for the council to understand is more about the difference between the I-494 vision for the quarter and then also the more narrow scope of the corridors of commerce projects. And also, if you could explain more about the formation of the Policy Advisory Committee and their role in guiding the project, and finally, the anticipated timing of municipal consent and the specifics of that process.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, thank you for hosting us again to, giving us a chance to give you an update on the 494 project. The last time we were here at council, we were still running through detailed traffic modeling on the second phase of the project development process. So, the update was going to give you at least a summary of the results that came from the detailed traffic analysis. So, just a quick reminder, the 494 corridor study that we are in right now covers 169 on the left side of the screen, all the way to the river. So, it goes way past here by the airport. And we broke the project development into three aspects or three packets. One was looking at Main Line 494 improvements. The other piece was the PAPO, which is the access reconfiguration from 24th to Lyndale Avenue. And the third piece was access reconfiguration again at 82nd Street and the 35W 494 interchange reconstruction. So, the work on the 494 project started in about March of 2018. At the time, we embarked on an effort to look at the entire corridor and get an environmental document approved by the Federal Highway Administration. Two months later, the state legislature awarded $204 million on this corridor to do a mean pass lane within certain limits and also reconstruct the 35W 494 interchange. So, the funded project falls within the limits of the corridor study. And it is important to differentiate the two because the vision is going to be guiding whatever improvements are going to be happening on the corridor, similar to the 2000 Environmental Impact Study that was done on the same corridor that saw the construction of Penn, the construction of France Avenue Bridge, the addition of lanes on 494, and converting a freeway into a highway system. So, as I've mentioned, we started in spring of 2018, and our process has continued being that we need to first get concurrence from our partners, meaning the Federal Highway Administration, the cities that are adjusting to the corridor, and the public on what the vision of the corridor should be. And once we have that identified, then we need to justify, really, how the corridors of commerce ties back into the corridor vision. All right. So, to get us that buy-in, to date, we have done three different levels of public involvement. The first one was to identify, going out to the public, asking them of what they wanted to see in terms of improvements on the corridor. And at the time, what the results that we, the results that came out, safety was a big concern to the general public. Of course, reducing congestion by improving mobility was another. There was also suggestions on improving or maintaining the assets, the asset conditions out in the corridor, including bridges and pavement. There was also a desire to promote transit advantage across the corridor as well. Once that was done, that really formed what we refer to as the purpose and need of the corridor. At the time, we were collecting ideas on how to address the concerns that had been brought forward. And we went through also an extensive effort, including talking to our local partners, including city councils like yours. There was also a public survey that was sent out to suggest improvements or to suggest solutions to the problems that had been identified. And in there, we had ideas like adding a general purpose lane or a managed lane, adding a barrier separated lane across the corridor. There was also just suggestions for access reconfiguration on both Main Line 494 and at the 82nd Street, including the 35W 494 interchange. So, in the first phase, the first phase of this effort of trying to sieve down the number of many options that had been proposed to more that were feasible and reasonable that would meet the purpose and need, we applied, I guess, a few guidelines on helping us sieve down those number of alternatives. In general, we're looking at how each of those solutions, how each of those suggestions would address mobility, how they would address safety, how they would impact both the environment, the economics, also the social aspects of those solutions, of the alternatives that had been considered. So, in all that effort, we narrowed down the number of alternatives that we moved from Phase 1 into Phase 2 to do a detailed traffic analysis. And the next slides kind of highlight what those alternatives were. Two that we went to, the detailed analysis, was adding capacity in terms of a general purpose lane or the mean pass lane. Those two would address both mobility, congestion, plus safety, safety improvements on the corridor. Also, they also have different, they scored differently on how they promote transit advantage on the corridor. So, we took those into a detailed traffic modeling, of which results we have later on coming up in the presentation. For the access reconfiguration, what moved forward from Phase 1 was looking at combining the existing ramps or the access interstate ramps at Nicolette and 12th, combining them at Portland, leaving Nicolette and 12th as overpasses only. So, we took that into Phase 2, which is the detailed traffic modeling. And in Phase 2, we were looking at what interchange type would effectively address both safety, congestion, and operations, both on the arterial system and on the freeway. This alternative was promoted to improve the distance between ramps because existing conditions with the existence of those ramps, we are having merge, I'm going to, lane merges that cause backups and also cause crashes on the corridor. The last category or the last bucket that was being looked at for the corridor vision was the reconstruction of the 35W 494 interchange as a whole. This picture highlights what was funded in the corridors of commerce, which was the northbound 35W to westbound 494 ramp movement, plus the inclusion of the 82nd Street Bridge reconstruction. What we are considering, based on both the public engagement that we did, is to, we are looking at eliminating, we are considering the elimination of the ramps on the north side of 82nd, on both sides. This is mainly driven by the amount of traffic that is using those ramps currently and how this entire system would operate because with those ramps, we are still seeing some merge friction or conditions that cause backup on northbound 35W as well.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Amber Blanchard, MINDOT Project Director. Glad to be here, so please feel free to answer, ask any questions as I go through. Before I get into the results that we're currently at on the Phase 2 screening process, I wanted to kind of go through our process schedule and timeline, as well as talk a little bit about the TAC and PAC committees that we have. The screening process for Phase 2, Andrew went through Phase 1 results, and all of those alternatives are now in Phase 2. We've gone through, starting with the process we have started back in August of this past year, with our first TAC meeting. Really, the background information started much earlier than that, as the modeling takes some time to do. So, we started in August, had our first TAC meeting on the Phase 2 screening back then. Went through, we're not quite done with the processing of the model and other information for the analysis and the results that we needed. So, much of August and September, we've had another TAC meeting, the beginning of September. And then also, our last TAC meeting was the beginning of October that we just had last week. Much of those have been to answer questions of the Technical Advisory Committee, update them on where we're at in the process of modeling, traffic modeling in the screening criteria, and refining those as we discuss where concerns are and questions lie. We have a, our next TAC meeting, I'll jump down just a little bit, on the 6th of November, which is our next one. In between that, though, we have our first Policy Advisory Committee meeting coming up the end of October, as you can see up there. The difference between the TAC and the PAC, the TAC is more made up of technical staff, those that are advising and understand the engineering and planning that go into the screening criteria process that we're doing right now. The Policy Advisory Committee is made up of elected officials within your area, someone on your council, as well as the other cities, and Hennepin County have a representative. It's chaired by our MINDOT District, Metro District Commissioner, Mike Barnes. And we'll, Andrew and I will be there, as well as other technical staff as needed, to hear the conversations. The TAC is responsible for questions, answering questions, understanding, and being kind of a communicator between each of you all and other cities and Hennepin County as well. And their job is really to make recommendations based on what they're finding from a technical side to the Policy Advisory Committee. And the PAC, their job is to understand, ask questions of the TAC and other staff to really understand what the recommendation is, and then their job is to either concur or not concur with that recommendation. The PAC also is in charge of helping us with communication as needed as well, and any city concerns from a council point of view as well. So, that's really, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, so in terms of the relationship with the PAC and TAC, I heard that, so it sounds like it, the content would come from the TAC, so if there's comments, questions, concerns, decisions that the TAC discusses, then that goes to the PAC?
That's correct.
And then we decide if, we discuss it, we decide if we concur or not?
That's correct.
And is it, is the scope only the 494 to the airport? Is that the scope of the work, or is it corridors of commerce work in general, both of those?
The scope of work is the whole vision, the entire vision of the project. So, that would be from 169 to the river.
Okay.
What we end up having funding for, we're going to be discussing probably with the TAC and PAC in the future, but really, it's, we're focusing on the vision because that's what the study originated from. The corridors of commerce funding just came as a bonus.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Director Asher.
Okay. Thank you. So, my question is, I'm looking at the schedule that you had on the overall project timeline, but that timeline's related to the corridors of commerce and not related to the vision layout.
It's kind of a mix of both.
Okay.
Because it does have, when we started doing the study in the vision, in the beginning, and it ends right now at the construction project, just because we don't know how far out we need to go. So, there likely will be, or hopefully will be, construction projects in the future, but we don't know that timeline. That could be infinity, it could be 20 years, it could be five years, we don't know at this point.
Okay, so the preliminary design is the vision layout, so you're going to do a preliminary design on the whole thing? Okay. Okay, thanks.
So, the final thing I want to mention about this is, after the next TAC meeting in November, we will likely not reach a recommendation at that first PAC meeting because this is more of an introduction to the project and kind of where we are at currently with it. So, we will have to come back sometime in the future for the PAC, and really, the TAC will have to make the recommendation, and the PAC will have to concur with that or not at that time. Really, the big milestone, though, that I want to make sure is clear is that, once the PAC does concur with that recommendation, that's really jumpstarts our environmental work, as well as our geometric layout work. So, that's kind of a whole point or a milestone that we need to get to in order to move on. So, really quickly, before we go into the summary slides for Main Line and Portland, I wanted to just remind everybody, this is kind of the scoring methodology that we're using, the symbolism we're using. This is kind of like a Consumer Reports type of thing, where it's, one thing isn't better than the other necessarily, meaning we have a perfect outcome with the desirable, it just means that it's desirable over something that is worse. So, and then, of course, undesirable is that open circle that doesn't have anything filled in, that's, could be related to where it is right now, comparing existing, it could be something different. So, we'll go into that here a little bit more as we get going. So, I'm going to start with Main Line. Main Line 494, for Phase 2 screening criteria, we have several criteria, and all of these criteria that you see above have, each of them have an enormous amount of work behind them. So, and that information will be forthcoming to our technical people to get out to you at some point here, hopefully, in the next day or two, we're hoping. As you can see, we have a number of criteria ranging from level of service on the freeway to travel time reliability, crash reduction, and this is in order of our purpose and need statement on the project itself. So, this is in order of our environmental documents. Then you have some social, economic, environmental impacts on the bottom there with aquatic resources, environmental justice, Section 4F and right-of-way. On the bottom, there's a couple of things that I want to explain, actually, three of them. First, I'm going to start with income equity. Income equity was a screening criteria where we tried to, early on, tried to understand how we could use income equity to screen out between general purpose lane or mean pass. And it became very apparent to us that we would be making assumptions that really we can't make, such as, would a low-income population choose to use mean pass or not? And we felt like we couldn't make that decision because that is something that is behavioral, right? It's something that's completely up to the driver at that point. So, the TAC decided to eliminate the income equity from scoring criteria. That doesn't mean that we were going to eliminate it completely, we still have to address it in the environmental documents that we have. So, we'll be talking about environmental justice and income equity at a later date, it's just not going to be used right now for this Phase 2 screening criteria. For freight, it became very apparent to us that we have more analysis to do to freight. The freight considerations for traffic modeling at this time took into account just heavy commercial, and we know we have a lot of small and medium commercial traffic on 494. So, we are in the process of making the small and medium commercial have a more fair look at it and not just take into account the heavy commercial. So, more information will be forthcoming on freight as we get going, and that's why you see it right there, it's kind of blank right now. And then fiscal considerations, we used what's called incremental benefit cost analysis, it's kind of a smaller, shorter way to do a benefit cost ratio and return on investment. And so, it's extremely confusing for a lot of people, even myself and Andrew. And so, we are taking more time to explain and figure out how to show incremental benefit costs to an audience that may not know it as well as we do. So, there'll be more information coming on fiscal considerations, incremental benefit cost on these two as well. So, any questions related to what you see up here?
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. Is there, in that fiscal consideration, a breakdown of regional versus local impact, fiscal or economic impact of the corridor?
At this point, I don't believe there is because it only focuses on travel time, user travel time on Main Line.
Is there any criteria that considers the local economic impact for folks like the city?
For Main Line itself, I don't believe so, but when we get into the analysis for the interchange at Portland, I believe there is.
Okay.
Are there questions from council members? Councilmember Whalen.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, this is updated information, but it all, still moving forward, evaluating all three, correct?
All three of what you see here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We're not narrowing it down further yet.
No, not yet. That's correct.
In terms of how these are determined, so is MINDOT making the determinations of if it's a full circle half or partial for some of these?
The determination is actually coming from the consultant that we have, based on statistical analysis. If the data for all three answers ends up being within 20%, then they get essentially the same score, if that makes some sense. I think it'll become much clearer to you once you see the background information behind all of these.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and particularly sharing that information with our staff and our technical experts for, you know, so their environmental justice is one. And how would a, how does mean pass, you know, get the same score for general purpose? And just having a better understanding of that. And then also, income equity and impact, I would want to see more of, if it's not going to be through this, how is that going to be taken into account? And is that going to actually have some real consideration and teeth behind it? And what does that end up looking like would be of interest to me? And I would really leave some of that level of detail to Director Asher and the folks that, in Public Works and our staff, to kind of look through some of these and see if it's making sense and aligning.
Sure. MINDOT has a pretty robust policy on putting environmental justice into the environmental documents that we do. We have specific things that we have to take a look at, so we can provide you that information.
Thank you.
One more thing before I leave this slide. I'll give you an example of some of the updates that we will be doing, which you haven't seen yet on this summary slide. If you go to the second criteria, person throughput, we had some discussions with Met Council and with mean pass staff and others who have agreed that it made sense to bump up the rate at which we've seen mean pass, person throughput. And the analysis that we had been using right now was 1.64, average number of persons in a vehicle at a time. Based on data from what we've been seeing, that actually increased to 1.84. So, that does have an effect on the scoring, and you'll be seeing that scoring here in the next couple of days, hopefully, once we get the packet to you.
And I have a question about the mean pass. So, is the corridors, corridor of commerce funding supposed to be moving us in the direction of more mean pass and ride sharing and all of that? So, how is that being considered? Because it kind of seems like it's like these are all at somewhat equal footing, or it's not weighted, mean pass is not weighted like maybe it should be.
Yeah, so one of the things, to answer your question, it isn't really included at this point because what we're doing right now is, the corridors of commerce program, when it awarded funds, it didn't necessarily award based on previous work that had been done, because we didn't have a project readiness criteria in there. So, that means that we hadn't gone through the environmental process here. We do need to do that for our projects, which means we have to treat all three of these fairly and analyze them fairly through the environmental process. What it does, though, is it, it doesn't put emphasis on one or the other, it really treats them fairly together. But there are, the consistent with regional transportation plans does include more of the Met Council's plan for implementing more mean pass, more mobility on corridors in the metro area. So, there is some more targeted criteria related to mean pass and mobility, which you'll see in the background information for the consistency with regional plans. That information will be coming.
Okay. Councilmember Supple.
So, I had been assuming that those results were because of the mean pass. Is there some other inconsistency with the regional transportation plans that is significant other than the mean pass to cause that difference between the general purpose lanes and the mean pass lanes? Or is that mostly because the regional plan is for mean pass?
I'm trying to think if there's more.
So, to restate, there's the difference for the consistent with regional transportation plans, you were saying was partly because of mean pass. Is there another factor besides mean pass?
There is. There's a few other factors. I want to say reliability is one of them. And I apologize, I'm going by memory. Can't think of, there were four of them, and I can't think of them off the top of my head. This is an average of all four, and I do know that mean pass wasn't the highest in all four. So, it was more average together, and general purpose, I think, was better for reliability, if I remember.
Right, it did, yeah. So, I think in that regional plan, there is reliability, there is a transit advantage.
There you go.
Congestion-free alternative, which mean pass would be the better one, and I don't remember the fourth one.
There is a fourth one.
The fourth one, yeah. Yeah.
There's a lot of work that goes in all of the criteria that you see here, which we will get you as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you.
So, for Phase 2, I'm going to move on to the Portland interchange. And again, these are, for the Portland interchange, we weren't evaluating in Phase 2 the decision of putting all the full access at Portland, because that was already decided upon in Phase 1. So, what Phase 2 did was to take a look at the interchange types, and that's really what the decision point is here. This is where we're currently at. A few things that I want to point out, there are five different interchange types here. A tight diamond interchange, a diverging diamond interchange, a Texas U-turn type interchange, roundabout, and single point. So, single point you're well aware of because Lyndale and Penn have that type of design. Roundabout essentially is just a tight Um, roundabout essentially is just a tight diamond with roundabouts on each end. Uh, Texas U-turn is rather unique and I'm going to have Andrew explain that, because I'm not very good at that.
So the Texas U-turn is very similar to the tight diamond. Uh, however, it allows a free move as you, as you approach the, the lights at the, uh, a data section. It allows you to make a U-turn without interacting with the signal lights.
Uh, diverging diamond is rather unique. Uh, what it does is it actually eliminates conflict points so that you can make more free left turns. Uh, it's, it's interesting and actually they're building one, um, MINDOT's building one right by my house. Uh, basically what a divergent dining does is it brings the right lanes to the left. And then you make those turning movements automatically without any conflict points of cars coming at you. So the diverging diamond will bring you over the bridge on the left-hand side and then will bring you back on the right-hand side once you're off the bridge. It's very interesting. Uh, and of course, tight diamond is what we've typically done at MINDOT. Uh, the red circles that you see that are blank, uh, that aren't filled in on the intersection operations for the diverging diamond and the roundabout essentially are somewhat fatal flaws in that the, those two, uh, types of interchanges uh, offer worse conditions than what's existing out there for traffic operations. So, uh, we wanted to make sure that those were highlighted in some ways so that, uh, the, everyone on the tack in the pack can understand that this is, this is an issue. Um, there's several other criteria. You'll see that, um, fiscal considerations is up here as well. That is based off of, um, incremental benefit cost analysis. It's very similar to the mainline. What we're showing right here is basically the difference in costs between all of these alternaments, uh, alternatives with the diverging diamond, uh, being the base. Um, I won't go into this now because it's much, much more confusing. Uh, it's the exact same thing essentially as our fiscal considerations for mainline. Uh, I'll go into this more, uh, when we come back to kind of present all the results. I think it'll make a little bit more sense then. But if you're curious, um, basically all it is, is the, um, roughly construction cost in the differences between the diverging diamond and the next, uh, expensive one and the diverging diamond and then the one after that, and so on and so forth. There is errors in this one with, I believe it's the Texas U-turn, correct? That, um, doesn't, it, it actually is a little bit higher than it probably should be because of the, uh, frontage roads in there. And so if we're really comparing apples to apples, we need to take the frontage road costs out. And so that, that number will be changing and you'll see that in the documentation that we'll be providing very shortly.
I have a question about that. Um, and this is, I guess, more for Director Asher and our staff. Um, have we looked at these options from a city perspective and, and decided kind of what we think makes most sense?
Um, Mayor, uh, councilmembers, we have been looking at these, um, I mean, I have some questions on this chart too, like, well, a couple. I don't know if you want to hear them here, because I know I haven't asked these guys. Um, but I, I just am so curious how roundabout can have a fatal flaw compared to like signalized intersections. So I'd, I'll be looking at that. But, um, and then you have the diverging diamond as a fatal flaw, but then you're using that option as your base. And if it's, if it's fatally flawed, maybe your base should move over to the tight diamond.
The reason the basis, the, um, diverging diamond is being used as the base for cost is because it's the most inexpensive. So it's the cheapest, um.
Right. But that's not, it doesn't look like it's actually an option anymore, if it's got a fatal flaw. Okay. Um, and then the Texas U-turn is, um, I think that's got a lot more local costs, was my understanding.
Not necessarily.
Okay. Um, that's, and I'm not, I hear Bloomington might be intrigued by the Texas U-turn, but I I don't know about that myself. So I have my own thoughts. But I haven't dug into this in detail.
Um, councilmember Wayland.
I was going to ask, um, relating to our city considering this, um, I know that we just, uh, got approved for the, um, the joint grant with Bloomington around this area. Would that include, uh, like looking deeper at this? Or is that kind of a separate piece? Or how do those overlap?
I, I mean, I'm not the point person on that, but I would think that we would share all the information that we have on this project to make that, their work meaningful.
I mean, could that, would that work inform or influence this decision? Or are those timelines not going to line up?
I think it could actually because, um, we won't start working on our geometric layout until the PAC has concurred with the recommended alternative. And, uh, you know, if, we're probably a good six months out before we'll have, um, any of that work completed or, uh, really even, um, a long ways along. So, and my understanding is this is happening the end of March. So I think the timing will work out very well for incorporation.
Any other questions? So I think, uh, councilmember Wayland answered my question, but I guess I'm just looking at this. This is the first time, I think, where we've seen this. Um, and so I just am like, I want to see what all of these look like. And I'm wondering what is our role in cost participation? What type of impact is there on our local community and city? How does the timeline all align? So did I just hear that we will be able to look at this deeper as a city? And then it will be in alignment with discussion and, okay, great. Thank you.
We're working on the cost participation, um, mapping kind of right now and, and what, what, um, effect our project has on there. So we'll get to that to you as soon as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
And is, just as a clarification, is that just as it pertains to Portland? Or are there any visions? For I know in the, the four ninety-four corridor commission that came up a little bit, I was very surprised. Um, to just understand some of those expectations, that there, there may be some, some additional cost participation. And so it seems exceedingly hard for me to evaluate anything like, you know, consent and municipal consent, all these things without knowing. Oh, is there, is there maybe a future year, like at, how many years down the road are we having this conversation? Like, oh, did we not mention there's some cost participation, you know, like as, just I know there are a lot of moving pieces, but as we build bridges of trust, it's, those are, we're just a tiny.
Little bit bridges, multi-billion dollars.
Yes, yeah, metaphorical and literal bridges. Yeah, that, just, uh, it, it's exceedingly helpful for us to have those expectations on the front end. And, and, and so just in addition to, to this quarter, like, can you kind of paint a bigger picture? Or tell us when we might get a bigger picture painted?
Sure. You're kind of stealing my thunder for the last slide, but I'll, I'll go into that, yeah. Um, well, like, we had mentioned before, the municipal consent process, we're nowhere near being ready for that. Uh, we have to do our geometric layout first before, uh, so we can show you a picture and what, how you might be affected before we come and ask you. We will ask you formally. And there's an entire process surrounding the, the municipal consent process, so.
Okay.
Uh, that likely won't happen that until at the earliest this next spring.
And could you please explain, so what is the scope of the municipal consent? In terms of the bigger vision, a portion of the project, what is within the municipal consent exactly?
So we get municipal consent to, uh, really to do a construction project. So it won't encompass the entire vision. The municipal consent, uh, that we will be seeking will only cover the construction portion that we will be doing.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, and I see councilmember Supple has a, a question as well. Um, in terms of the cost participation, you know, with the what, is it over a hundred and forty-five million dollars we've participated in already for this project? Um, Director Asher. And then, um, the underpass as well, are those, have the parameters of cost participation been created already? And are those type of things going to be considered as well?
The, the policy is still in effect, so we still have to use our policy on this construction project. But we're, we're still trying to look at what we're affecting because of our project and where participation may, may lie. So that, that's still forthcoming.
Okay, so we don't know yet if those things will be considered.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Supple.
So as a follow-up to those questions, we're talking about the full access at Portland interchange, but that also means that there be, would be significant changes at twelfth and Nicollet. Is that part of the consideration of all the costs and who's responsible for some of those changes?
Yeah, so that, uh, twelfth and Nicollet are included as well in here, but we are looking at, um, one of the things we look at is what's causing the change. And so that's taken into consideration within our cost participation policy. And all of that will be looked at, including the entire area, really, in, on mainline four ninety-four. So twelfth and Portland and Nicollet will be included in that look.
Because it's being caused by the shift in with the access points. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
One additional question that I'm guessing the, the answer is going to be that it would come, um, later, potentially after the, the study through the grant, potentially after the, the geometric work. But, um, I'm seeing the right-of-way column, they're all, I know that's not identical, but they're all relatively similar. Um, it's, I'm guessing though, that it would potentially be in different areas or different. Uh, so I guess I'm hoping that in the future we'd get, um, we'd see more specifics about exactly like which businesses and properties would be impacted by that. Okay.
Yeah, you'll see all that information. Um, the, one of the reasons they're all basically the same is because they are so close. There is a differentiation and you'll see that in some of the, um, background information that we'll be providing, but it's not a whole lot. So.
Other questions from councilmembers? Um, Director Asher?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering right now if the vision layout moves forward and it finds that a general purpose lane is the right way to go, what happens to the quarters of commerce money?
I was hoping you were not going to ask me that question. Um, the answer is we don't know. Uh, there's a lot of politics behind that. As you probably can guess, so that's one of the things that we're trying to navigate ourselves is if that does happen, then what happens to the quarters of commerce money? And we just don't know at this point.
Thank you. Um, and I have a question going back to, so you said that it's still being determined if past investment in this project from the city of Richfield would be considered as cost participation, correct?
Well, Mayor, um, Mayor, the, the, the policy that, um, that we are basing the cost participation on doesn't take into consideration previous investments.
And who, um, who made that decision or who?
So it's, it's amended policy that, uh, sorry, it's amended policy that we did share with the city staff. Uh, however, it, how it does not stop us from having the negotiations as we determine where, uh, what the level of participation should be from our local partners.
Thank you. So based on that, I don't know if that's a discussion internal to the city of Richfield, but I, I think, um, whatever we can do to advocate, if that is not within the scope of the policy but can be taken into consideration, I will be working as hard as possible to make sure that that is taken into consideration. Um, and I, I think we all will be, but that is huge, absolutely huge for the city of Richfield to be considered. Councilmember Troutman.
Is that policy set by the commissioner or by the governor or by statute? Could you explain the, the authority for the policy?
By statute, I can't say.
It's not by statute. I believe it's by our commissioner. Uh, there's been, um, at least twice that I can recollect in my twenty years at MINDOT where we have gone and kind of revamped the participation, cost participation policy. And, um, every time we have, we've gone to all of our stakeholders, uh, with all of the changes that we made to that policy, uh, including Richfield and other cities throughout the state. So, uh, it's not been done in a vacuum at all, but it, it was included, including all of our stakeholders in that, those change processes. The last one being done in twenty fifteen-ish, I think, I believe.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to know that there's some flex, I mean, it, you don't have to get the legislature and the governor and everybody to align. You know, to decide what, what makes sense. There are not too many things that we spend nine figures on in Richfield.
Right.
Right.
And I just want you to see in our faces, nine figures, we're a tiny little city. And for, for us to hear that, uh, the, the commissioner has a policy that says we don't consider that is devastating. So I would ask the commissioner and the team to consider how devastating that is for a small little city like us to say, there's no consideration given. So I, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Supple, did I see your hand up?
You did, but I believe Ms. Councilmember Troutman has covered the point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, um, city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so my understanding, I've read the cost participation policy that's on, online certainly, but I didn't understand that there was a cost participation policy for quarters of commerce yet that's been developed?
No, it's, it's still the same policy. So it's not quarters of commerce, it's all construction projects at MINDOT.
Okay. And, and I, uh, just a follow-up question. Um, also, I thought there was an exemption process for the cost participation.
There is, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So on this slide, I just want to give you kind of an update on, um, where we're at with uh, one of our ma, of many, many estimates that we've had on the project. And keep in mind, uh, this cost estimate, we do lots and lots of cost estimating. They all have different assumptions with them. And so what I like to do is with cost estimates that I present, I want to state my assumptions. So you'll see that in the next slide. Um, but this cost estimate is based on the full vision. It was done back in May of this year. Uh, it will include, it's a total project cost estimate. So that means it's not only the construction costs, but also the cost to deliver the project, including right-of-way engineering in construction and before construction and that sort of thing. Uh, what you see here, of course, is based on, um, what I mentioned before, the entire vision. So it goes from one sixty-nine to the river. It does include both phases of the interchange, uh, thirty-five W four ninety-four interchange. So both phases of the turbine design. Uh, it, it's got six hundred and sixty million is what we came up with. And what we do is we use a range of fif, plus or minus fifteen percent. So that's why you see the numbers there. And keep in mind, uh, the quarters of commerce funding that we received was only two hundred and four million. And that, uh, was both for the four ninety-four MinPass, which is the one thirty-four and seventy for the turbine interchange.
Councilmember Troutman, if you have a question? Okay, um, councilmember Supple.
Just double checking, so none of these figures include anything for the underpass. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Um, and then just connecting back to the conversation we just had previously to this. So in terms of, um, getting funding for the gap and then talking about cost participation, who's all expected to, or who, who's all expected to participate in the cost participation? Does that include MINDOT? And then what about the, um, remainder of the gap for the full project?
So I want to point out, this is the vision. Um, likely, we would have phasing of the vision over time because MINDOT does not have six hundred and sixty million dollars just for this project alone. We have many priorities throughout the metro area and we have to disperse that. Um, what would probably happen is MINDOT, uh, metro would need to figure out what part of the vision to construct first, what part to construct second, and where that's money, and so on and so forth, and where the money is coming from over time. So it would be, um, this part, uh, during, let's use the quarters of commerce funding, for instance. That would be the first part, uh, in theory. And then we would have a second part that would cover something else, uh, with the vision. And a third part that would cover something else and it would be, uh, it could come from a variety of funding sources. But typically, we don't have usually all of the funding identified for a project before we even start it. That usually gathers, gathers over time as we develop it. So we may or may not build all of this at once in the timeframe that we have for quarters of commerce. It may be likely phased over time.
Thank you. When, I just want to ans, um, get one other thing answered and then I'll pass it to councilmember Garcia. And then in term, could you?
And then in term, could you let me know who, or who will be within the scope of the cost participation? And is MINDOT a part of that as well?
Yes, MINDOT is a part of that. Um, the scope of the cost participation will be those cities and county, cities that would be touched by the project, so by the construction project itself.
Thank you.
Right, and Mayor, just to also maybe shed a little bit more light on the cost participation aspect of, of this whole project. So differentiating between the funding gap and what, uh, based on the policy, MINDOT would be coming to our local partners to participate in. The, the level of cost participation for local partners really covers everything that is beyond what is needed for the MINDOT project. So what I mean by that, for example, um, if our local partners asked for additional sidewalks on Portland, those costs would be covered by the local partners because it's an additional ask beyond what is needed for the project. So that's completely different from trying to close the, uh, six hundred or so funding gap on the vision.
Thank you. Council member Garcia?
Uh, what do you anticipate the federal money coming in, what percentage?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, right now, it's kind of, we really don't know yet because all the quarters of commerce funds are all state funds. Um, MINDOT has a number of funding buckets that has, uh, federal funds associated with it. And there are those funds that could be put on any number of projects. So I guess I can't answer your question just immediately, but there are funding options for federal funds.
Okay, do, does, are we corresponding with, uh, our Congresswoman?
So.
Letting her know what legislation needs to be supported?
We just, uh, had a check-in about this a week ago, so I don't know if staff did set, set something up or if this is on the list.
Yes, Mayor, we're following up to try and set up a meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
So the assumptions that went into this cost estimate, um, are on the what's included side of, on the left there. Uh, I just wanted to give you an idea of what the actual scope is. Uh, for pavement, we assumed concrete, uh, pavement, main line with the Batum and the shoulders. For drainage, back when we did this, the a hundred and eight inch new trunk line was still in play. Obviously, that is not the case anymore, but back then it was. Back then, it was a hundred million dollar, um, addition, really, for the a hundred and eight inch new trunk line. Uh, that's cut in half now with, uh, the newest option that Andrew's gonna go into here in a very short minute because we're running out of time.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, there are many bridges on, assumed to be here. Again, MinPass is almost the entire corridor, uh, many retaining walls and noise walls, as well as, uh, the intelligent transportation system needed for MinPass. Over at signing, lighting, uh, I mentioned right-of-way, um, utilities, contaminated materials. Basically, everything that we need to construct the project is included in this estimate.
Council member Whalen?
Um, just a quick question that might be getting into the weeds and is probably gonna be resolved later. But I saw the, the noise walls on there, knowing that a fair amount of this area is, uh, commercial properties who want the visibility, I assume there'd be a process to determine where we want sound walls and not.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions on this one?
Oh, council member Troutman?
Wait, I see the what's not included. Were there things, was that intentionally blank or there?
It is intentionally blank.
Okay.
Because it means that basically everything we came up with was included in this estimate, yep.
Okay. And is any of this on the needed and not needed? If I understand that, are these all, are these all needful things on the, on a big picture?
That depends on your perspective, yeah.
I'm, I'm curious, in your perspective, as it pertains to your desire to look to us as partners?
Sure. Um, you know, the, how do I answer that question?
Frankly, if you could.
Sure. I, I think there are a lot of things that we could do with this project now, absolutely. This is, this is, minus the drainage, of course, because that's changed over time. But a lot of the, uh, things in here that we have are just good engineering judgment. And since we're out there, we try and get hit as many engineering items as we possibly can, including asset preservation. And not only that, but fixing the problem that we're out there to fix. So in my estimation, this, this is really the vision, this is what we are setting ourselves up to do in the future.
So needed.
So needed.
Thanks.
Okay, you're up.
Yeah, all right. So for the next three slides, uh, quickly walk through, um, one, one of the biggest risks that, uh, we are still managing on the project. And in hindsight, we should have been referring to these as ideas and options because, uh, there is still a vetting process that we go through with our local partners, city councils, uh, and the county, including, uh, some private property owners in really determining how feasible, um, an idea is. So this slide really talked through, uh, the ideas that we have gone through on the, uh, on the drainage aspect of the corridor. We are now at, uh, idea six, which we should now really call option one. Uh, but so the ones that we went through, um, the first one was, uh, the, the red, which was, uh, proposing a a hundred and eight-inch tunnel, about four miles long from 35W all the way to the river. So that option was, was eliminated because of, uh, costs. It was upwards of two hundred million to do that, and also the, uh, the, uh, technology that was needed to make it viable. It was just, uh, it's so astronomical. So we, we nicked that idea. Uh, the second one was going, proposing a trunk line on private property. So this is owned by Excel Energy. Um, it was a lot cheaper than option one, but it was getting close to about eighty or ninety million. And of course, going through, going on private property. So the way this got eliminated because of two things, costs and, um, and Excel Energy wasn't, uh, uh, a, a willing partner to build a big trunk line on their property. And secondly, of, uh, thirdly, of course, the, uh, public perception of us going building, uh, constructing a pipe and, uh, constructing open ditches, uh, behind people's backyards. Didn't seem to be a good idea. The third one, uh, similar to option one, was, uh, proposing, uh, the same size of, of trunk line, a hundred and eight inches, but then it was going to be open cutting or open excavation, uh, the entire four miles. Could have taken us maybe two years, two, four years to get that option in. So in terms of constructability, um, uh, amount of traffic impacts made it not a viable alternative. Option four, um, was an idea that, uh, the project team, uh, brought up that was going to be impacting, um, the city of Richfield's Woodlake Nature Center. Cost-wise was, seemed more viable than the other three that we had looked at. But, uh, the amount of environmental impact that option would cause, uh, made it, uh, um, not a, a good alternative for us to continue considering. So that's why we eliminated that. Uh, option five was really looking along the entire corridor, looking for any location that we could do, uh, underground storage. Uh, issues with that option, obviously, were that the structures would have been very deep, which causes, uh, issues on how we would maintain those deep structures. Secondly, uh, the, the corridor has high water, uh, ground levels. So there was, uh, a risk of groundwater seeping into the structures, or the structures seeping, uh, contaminated water out, out of them. So that also nicked that idea. Option six that, uh, we are now continuing with as, uh, as our best, uh, best idea for fixing the drainage, uh, issues on the corridor is to do both shallower underground storage in the loops of Highway 77 with dry ponds that would be sitting on top of them. So the underground storage is about ten by twelve, uh, box carvats compared to option five that was, uh, oh, and this one's about ten feet deep. Option five was proposing underground storage that was upwards of thirty to fifty feet deep. Uh, secondly, this option would, would construct new power trunk lines, smaller trunk lines on the frontage roads that are abating 494 on both sides of 494. So, um, which kind of, uh, refers back to when we looked at the interchange types and the comment that Amber made that meant, uh, the, the project is causing the replacement of the frontage road. So therefore, cities wouldn't be participating in that aspect. So this is one of the reasons why, uh, we would be ripping out the frontage roads to put in the trunk lines and, uh, and paying for that work. So this option is, uh, right now being called at, uh, close to about fifty million, outside of fifty million. And, uh, as I've mentioned earlier, we're going to continue with that as our base, uh, drainage cost.
Council member Troutman?
Are those costs integrated into the estimates, the global estimates that were earlier in the presentation?
No, they are not because these are newer information and that estimate was back in May. We do have more cost estimates that have been done since then that, um, do incorporate the new drainage options into them.
Council member Whalen?
Um, I noticed that it still does have some, um, some surface ponds on the, the Richfield side by 12th Avenue. Um, I was just curious why, um, I know at one point we had talked about the areas where the ramps are taken out as potential properties for businesses or any number of things, um, which, I mean, this is, this is obviously much less of an impact than like the Woodlake option or something. But I, I guess I was just curious why, um, why it's proposed to have a drainage pond there? And if there's any ponds proposed, um, in Bloomington or, or other cities, um, on land that they would have been able to use?
Right, yes, uh, council member Whalen, yes, they, uh, there are ponds that, uh, located on property that is currently being purchased or being impacted by, by the project. Uh, however, and this has been the message I've been telling my project team as well, that, uh, as we try, we are trying to balance two things, minimizing impacts on, on developable property, but as well trying to get a solution, a drainage solution that meets all the environmental, uh, the environmental needs. So this is, in my, this is a continuing discussion with our local partners to figure out where we would, uh, put the drainage solution that meets all, all needs.
Other questions from council members? Um, and Director Asher?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify for, uh, council member Troutman. I think this estimate's not in that overall number, but the estimate for the, the trunk line that's not happening was. So you had a hundred million in there for stormwater solutions, so it's not on the top of that, so.
Thank you.
So this is, um, I, this is the first time we are seeing this, correct? I don't think we've seen this as an option before. Um, I am very happy to see that Woodlake Nature Center is not on there. Um, I, I do think that would have been devastating for our community. And again, um, I would want to have more in-depth information and have a follow-up with our staff and your staff. And again, um, we want to be good partners. We feel like we have been, we have been good partners on this project throughout the project, uh, throughout the past, and we want to continue moving that forward. And for us, while there's different separate pieces of the project, there's multiple things that are impacting our community. Um, and we want to talk about it holistically and look at it holistically. Um, and again, the underpass is a part of that, and now this would be a part of that. So, um, I know that there's more meetings to come, but we are gonna want to dive very deep into all of those discussions and connect the dots, and are looking to our staff to, to help lead a lot of that and, um, those, those preliminary discussions and, and bring it back to our council. Because this is, you know, this is very, would be very impactful for Richfield.
Mayor and council members, I do want to apologize because I, I understand that, uh, the Woodlake option that we were looking at uh, kind of got to you in a roundabout way, and that was not our intent to do that. So that was oversight on my part, so I apologize for that. The, um, we were fully vetting everything on Woodlake and we met with, uh, Director Asher and, and Ms. Trader Gonzalez to try and figure this out. And I really appreciate all the work that they did with, uh, the Nature Center staff too, to help us understand what obstacles there, there was, so.
Thank you.
So really quickly, I'm gonna go through engagement here. Um, Andrew talked about a little bit before about what engagement we have been doing. Uh, basically, the engagement that was ongoing this summer was more to inform the public as to where we're at with the process and what the, uh, phase one, uh, screening, uh, kind of resulted in. So we had a, an online virtual open house, we had project background and summary that we did. We ended up reaching, um, over twelve hundred people at in-person pop-up events, as well as, uh, over twenty-two hundred individuals that came to our online virtual open house. So we, we got to a lot of people. And I do want to point out, um, this, these maps are kind of hard to see, but basically, they talk about the, um, low-income and minority populations in the city of Richfield in Bloomington. And we really tried, uh, to make a concerted effort to make sure that our engagement, uh, not necessarily targeted them, but really wanted to make sure that the neighborhoods that contained those populations had abundant information about the project. And every dot that you see on there represents a pop-up event or a flyer that we posted. So, um, I, this is, it's amazing the amount of, uh, work that has gone into that and that our consultant has done with our rounding, surrounding engagement in this vicinity. So we're really proud of that. And we'll continue to do that as well. So our next steps for engagement, um, really, we need to reach a statewide audience, uh, with 494. Of course, the region and, and the locals are important on this project. But with the destination of the airport, eighty-four of the eighty-seven counties see daily, uh, commutes to the airport and are represented. So the state of Minnesota is essentially traveling on 494 every day. And that's why we need to reach a wider audience as well. We're gonna continue with the underrepresented populations and, uh, make sure we're in their communities. We're gonna continue to do in-person and online, um, venues for information. We will present the recommended alternative, once we get there, for each of the decision points. And then, uh, we will be requesting public feedback in the future as well on that. So again, on the next steps, I kind of went through the slide already and we already talked about municipal consent, so I don't need to really, uh, focus on this one. So here are our websites. Uh, if you have any, uh, desire, please go visit them. And with that, if there are any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any last questions from council members or staff? Nope. Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us.
Thank you.
I will adjourn the meeting.